And the answer is that in September, when we... Oh, where's Mr. Wilson?
Well, we should... No, we need to wait for him. That's not... Can we peek outside? I think that's polite to wait.
Oh, is he outside?
I don't know where he is, but I mean, I think he's over there.
He may be communicating.
They're ready to start. Now he's been told.
He's talking. He knows, Terry, so I...
He knows.
So he said, "I'm coming in." He's still talking, so I think we can continue.
So the reason I put number, item eight, on the agenda is that in our September 29th meeting, the special meeting, you might remember, we had to squeeze in nominations for the County Committee on School District Administration.
Right.
And when I asked for nominations for the District 2 seat, Kerry nominated Steve Gile, and I moved on. And I think it was Kerry who asked the question, "What? There isn't going to be any second?" And because next month, we're going to have our own school board elections.
That makes sense.
I thought we should clarify this, because I went and I looked through all the district policies, all the CSBA policies, and there's absolutely nothing about nominations and elections. So what you have here is material that is excerpted from Robert's Rules of Order, because that's our secondary running the meeting document. And it seems to me to be a reasonable set of processes. So I would recommend that we adopt as a process, one, the president calls for nominations. Recognition by the chair is not required to make a nomination, so you can't have the chair playing favorites and deciding who gets to make our nomination first. It's he or she who shouts firstest. Nominations don't have to be seconded, but it's not out of order for members to second a nomination to signal their endorsement. A member shall not offer more than one nomination for a position if there are several seats on the same office until all other members have had the opportunity to make a nomination. Nominations are taken for successive offices in the order that they're listed in Board Bylaw 9100. Nomination process continues until nobody wishes to make a further nomination. The chair declares nominations closed. Election for each position takes place immediately after nominations have closed. Election shall be by roll call, with each member of the board announcing his or her preferred candidate. Secretary shall record the vote with each board member. Candidate is elected when and he or she receives the votes of a majority of the board members, not board members present in voting, but a majority of the board members.
Are you... Do we have that, which you're still reading from?
Yes. It's right in the...
Did you go back up? Because I was... Okay. I was down below, and then, okay, I was... Nominations from the floor. Is there a third page? Can I look over your shoulder? That didn't come up when I...
It's right in the agenda itself. It's not an attachment.
Oh, see, I just have all the attachments. Okay, I need to look over your shoulder, please. I'm sorry. I didn't... That's why I was getting lost.
He just read.
Right. Do you mind if I take it, because I can blind? Just hold it closer for a second.
Okay. So election for each position takes place immediately. Candidate is elected, receives the votes of a majority of board members. If no candidate is elected on the first ballot, candidate with the fewest votes will be eliminated and another roll call is conducted. So the reason for that part of it is if somebody's nominated for president but not elected as president, then they can be nominated as clerk. So you have the order in which you're going to do things.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So like what... Because last time when we did it, not the last time I knew I was elected, I think it was when I was, it was confusing. So somebody made a nomination, and we had to vote right then and there. So like, let's say, three people get nominated. I mean, it was confusing, because after the first person got nominated, they had a vote. I mean, like, let's say, somebody wanted to vote. Yeah, it was odd. So the way this is, everybody that... So potentially, you could have five nominees. I mean, that's unrealistic.
You could.
So everybody that... So when you say you don't have to be recognized, the first person that jumps in, is that going to be... I mean, what is... Then you said they're voted in the order, so what is...
No. So you're... These are nominations for president, let's say.
Right.
And if there are three nominations, so Susan and Val and I are nominated, then the clerk will call the roll, and you will say, "I vote for so-and-so," one of those three.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so you don't... I got it. That makes sense.
Okay.
Yes. Because if you had to vote for all at one time...
Do you have to vote for yourself?
I'm sorry?
You should.
So the other thing...
Depends if you want it or not.
The other thing that I'm going to recommend is that we actually add this to the government's handbook, because we're trying to keep our policies and bylaws aligned with the CSBA ones. This material isn't covered in any of the CSBA documents, so my suggestion is that we just put it in the government's handbook.
Can I see that again? Sounds good. I like that idea, having to put it in the handbook. Oh, I see. Announcing his or her preferred candidate. That's great, Terry. That's good.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Thanks for doing that.
When we get into the government's handbook, then we'll take the vote action, to make the formal outset. But we will use this process next month. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We didn't have any request to remove anything from the consent agenda when we considered agenda changes, so I'm ready to accept a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
It is.
We have a motion from Member Friend. We have a second.
I'll second.
Second from Member Wright. Are there any further discussion on consent agenda? Can we pull the workplace?
Aye.
Member Friend?
Aye.
President Tru?
Aye.
Member Brownell?
Aye.
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Now, you would think, in most organizations, that an actions section would be where the action is, right? But here we are, two and a half hours into the public session, and we finally get to the actions session, and we only have two items on them. One of them is approval of board policies and board bylaws. And are there people... Are there people with specific comments, or suggestions, or concerns about any of the proposed changes here?
Hold on. I'm scrolling, scrolling. I have a clarification question. So are you wanting to do all of these at once, if possible?
That's what I would recommend. If... I would ask for a motion to do that, if anybody has any...
Well, let me see if that's just the one question I have. I can have that and go. I took notes on here, so give me a second. Well, I have two questions, actually.
I have a small problem, too. Did we go through the internet safety policies already? Did we approve that, like, in a blanket thing, and I missed it?
I'm sorry?
That would have been...
That's the SIPA. I guess that was the...
That was on...
SIPA was on...
Darn it. Okay. I meant to comment on that.
Okay.
I know. Sorry.
Just to reaffirm the way... The right way to comment on that would be when we're discussing the agenda, that you'd say, "I'd like to pull item six off the consent agenda."
Okay, so that would have been...
So we would approve the agenda right at the beginning.
At the very beginning of the meeting?
At the very beginning. You have to do homework.
Actually, I meant to tell you that after last meeting, when you asked about my professional development.
Oh.
Because that was after it was... So...
So I need to do that at the beginning?
Anything you have questions on, that's on the consent, you need to pull it in the beginning.
So that goes where?
Before close sessions, the approval of the agenda.
So one...
Here, right along with...
One, two?
Right here, number two.
And number two, public comment and close session.
No, no, no. This is number two.
A one, two. Approval of agenda?
Yeah.
Approval of agenda. Oh, that's this agenda, and then I'd like to pull...
Because otherwise, if it's not pulled, we don't talk about it. We just approve it.
Oh, darn it. Okay.
And before we did that, we'd have... We'd go through the warrants or something. It just took forever.
Many, many groups allow, but the board of supervisors being the most obvious one, allow comments on consent agenda items, even though they're still going to consider them as a whole. We don't have any particular... We have done that at some times.
I think you can table individual ones to go...
There's nothing wrong with commenting on something. It's if you... You need to pull it if you don't want to approve it as that whole batch.
Oh.
And vote on it separately and discuss it. Decide at that point whether or not you want to approve it. At the beginning of the consent agenda, you can comment on the consent agenda.
And if I had questions about it and all of that, then you...
If you want to discuss it and get into back and forth, then yeah, you need to pull it.
All right.
I studied SIPA. I can talk to you later about it.
You said you had a comment on that.
Well, I just had... Actually, I had questions, too, and I think I just wanted to talk about it amongst all of us, and just to get any, like, input from other board members, if anybody else cared about it, like I do.
Well, that's not a nice way to put it. Of course, we care about it.
Well, I didn't mean it... No, because it's my hot button, and it's not anybody else's hot button, so...
Well, it depends on what you bring up, though, and, you know, just like I, I'm a newbie, so are you. And, you know, these are things that we need to know from you guys.
Yeah.
That really helps out. And, you know, I'd kind of like to hear what you've said.
Yeah, and I don't think you're questioning whether or not you want to vote for it and approve it.
Oh, not at all.
You just like so... I think it's within the president's purview to allow you to make your comments, so...
Okay. Does everybody else have a question?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. I just... This is on the SIPA complaint, the Cayucas, our district, our internet safety policy. They just went into some definitions and access to inappropriate material. And so I... One of the questions I had was, who determines what's harmful and what's not harmful? And I know there's like this Children's Internet Protection Act walking, and, you know, just more information about how our kids are protected while they're on the internet.
So that is a requirement of us receiving E-Rate funds.
E-Rate funds.
E-Rate funds are special funds that we get that discount our internet connection drastically. You can also apply for E-Rate funds for special equipment to purchase. For us, right now, it's mainly our internet connection gives us a huge discount on it. Part of taking E-Rate funds means you have to jump through the federal hoops. One of those hoops is, you have to adopt that policy officially for the district. Now, when we get into what specifics are implemented in the district, that would be more in our technology use agreements, which isn't board adopted as part of the family handbook. And so I would be happy to discuss those items with you, work on modifications. Annually, every summer, we update the family handbook and make sure our technology use agreement is still relevant. So by all means, if you'd like to collaborate on it, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay.
Susan, that's on you. I'm just writing myself a note. We had these huge articles last year on SIPA, but when I got my master, I can send you those articles. They're pretty... They're long, but it'll give you an understanding of what you have to follow, what you have to do, and why it is, and...
Just that... Just the safety and who... Is Shawn Anderson the one in charge of making sure that all the things are, like, in place that kids can't get around? Like, who's in charge of that?
So it's a collaboration with him and the people that support us from the county Office of Ed. And we do have internet filtering in place that's a requirement of that policy and the Child Internet Protection Act.
Okay, so that would be Shawn and the board?
And...
The filter has a system.
They've worked to put the filter in place that those filters are updated automatically by those companies. You get a subscription. So they're constantly hunting the internet, adding things to the block list, constantly refining those lists so that the filter works properly, but no filter is a hundred percent.
Well, and sometimes it can be a hindrance to teachers, too. Things that educationally appropriate are blocked, and then you have to get unblocked. I mean, that's a whole...
Well, and that's mentioned here. Does our feed actually come physically through Slowco?
Our... No. Well, yes and no. Our connection to Slowco is charged cable.
Yeah.
And then, once it hits Slowco, we share their internet connection.
Okay. But we don't have direct connection to the internet here. We have direction to the filters and the processes.
We should have a filter here, but I believe they also filter their level.
Well, yeah, because, well, we did have a little access to some YouTube, so I was curious how that... I think that one got stopped, though, but anyway.
It's always a moving target on filtering, that's for sure. But I'd be happy to look at those policies and receive input on updating them. And once we get some ideas, I can collaborate with Mr. Anderson and/or the county on it.
Okay. And I... Yeah, because I just wanted the other board members, too, because this is all new to everyone. This is not... And this is, you know, none of us grew up with it, and it's a whole new thing here that I think I would like all of us to be mindful of, you know, especially the inappropriate network usage.
Well, just look at what's... All these, you know, Google and all these people who've just been before the Senate Committee on this sort of thing, being, you know, told that they, you know, it's no free check. If you're going to have this contact with people, you have to take responsibility for it. And they're, you know, waving their hands like, "Well, it's free speech." Well, you know, it's yelling fire in a crowded theater, you know. Well...
You're right. Right now, the internet is the Wild West. I mean, look at the dark web. It's something else.
Can you look at the dark web? It's dark.
You need a big flashlight. You need to know the right suffixes that go there secretly, and they're all semi-secret.
How can there be a secret?
Yeah. You can only communicate with me if you know the magic code, but the only way I can give you the magic code is if you know the magic code.
Well, let's move on.
Okay. Well, anyway, thank you all for... I just... It's something that I'm very interested in. And I think, actually, a couple of you guys have sent me articles in the past, like, from the gate, the Melinda Gates being very concerned in her kids, and just, you know, people that are in it and have made huge profits because of it are very protective around it, too, with their kids.
May I add one thing? Terry, I appreciate you making an exception to revisit this, because, you know, this agenda is here to serve you guys. And I just gave an example of the agenda serving you instead of you serving the agenda. You know, if it's publicly posted, you have the right to talk about it, Terry. And you can work with one another to make it work for yourselves so that you're all comfortable with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So now we'll move to 10.1.
We didn't approve them.
I know. I said we're going to move to 10.1.
Sorry, I was... Gotcha. Gotcha, gotcha.
And Kerry, you indicated this...
No, I figured out the comments I had. I don't have any.
Okay. I will make a general statement on these. I sat here, then I read through them, and I read the titles, and I said, "Vision, philosophy, not so much, you know, sorry. Vision and philosophy." I said, "You know, we really don't do a good job of that compared to many other districts." So one of the things that we'll be doing at the December meeting is talking about our priorities for next year. And I really encourage you to think about what's important to you, or how you think we could improve this. I have to say that I'm not a big vision and philosophy guy, but I feel guilty when I don't do it, even though I tend to be... I have other... I tend to focus on the short term, Mr. Wilson.
When we've done this before, which we've done a lot of times, is I started looking at other districts and what they do, and some of them, and the state is a good place, State Board of Education, is they're briefer to get to a general point of, you know, of departure, rather than, you know, it's long and wordy here, and they do it. And it's just a starting point for doing good things. And those are encompassing of what you see in these. It just makes it... It makes it easier, and it's easier to express to the public, I think, so.
I know. When I went to the Tascadaro School Board meeting, they had on the front wall of the room, which they had the meeting, they have their... It's sort of like the Ten Commandments for Tascadaro, but they have... That means they have to be short, but they're always there for the public to see. The board heads their back to them, so the board maybe can ignore them.
Literally and figuratively, yeah.
Yep. And that's... Literally, figuratively, I don't know. I didn't... But there are things there that can help us to be more cohesive and can help us to have some commonly identified things. And the board... The government's handbook is the same thing. The government's handbook is often where the vision and the philosophy detail are stored so that you can find them in the file. Any more comments, discussion?
I would just like to make one other comment about it. Obviously, a lot of board policies updates on a regular basis. And, you know, these are basically CSBA recommended updates. They come through on a regular basis. It's a moving target to know board policy and board bylaws all the time. So I would just encourage our newest members that I, you know, I wouldn't feel bad if occasionally they change all the time, so none of us can be masters of them.
That's why we let gamut.
So...
And if I could comment as well, the most current board policies are in the binders in the office. They are not the ones that are on our website, because CSBA is about six months behind updating. Once you update a policy at a board meeting, I send that to them.
Oh, you can't update it. They have to...
I have to send it to them, and then they have to upload it onto our page.
Well, that's annoying.
So if you want to know, and there was one referenced tonight, if you want to know, you should come and look in the binders.
That's because there are, what, 900 school districts?
Correct. Yeah.
Changing and uploading, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion, then, to adopt items 10.1, 1 through 10.1, 18?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Wilson makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there a second? Is there further discussion? And Pam, if you would...
Member Friend?
Aye.
President Tru?
Aye.
Member Brownell?
Aye.
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
And now, the thing we've all been waiting for, is we do the approval of the 2016-17...
So everybody got it?
Not all of it.
And Superintendent Kenneth Smith, you have the fun of leading us through the highlights.
Thank you, President Tru.
I would prefer that you not lead us through all the details.
Memorize it, right? Just a second.
Okay. I think I can work with that. So, not to ruin a good novel, but let's read the ending. Page 80, or 81, is the...
81?
Page 80, yes. Schedule of findings and questioned costs. Basically, due to Rebecca, Malanies, and I helped a little bit, were, we have no findings, which is what we want, no findings. They didn't find any irregularities. They didn't find any lack of internal controls. They didn't find any inappropriate expenditures. So that's the best audit report we could wish for. Then the other thing that I think you may be interested in, and I alluded to this a couple meetings ago, is page 70. Page 70 shows the financial trends. You can see that... I'll direct you to the first paragraph underneath all the numbers, where it says, "The general fund balance has increased by $73,900 over the past two years." And since we ran a very conservative budget, and we are looking at a possible deficit spending of $200,000 this year, I was at a recent meeting where the county treasurer did a report to the CBO, countywide CBO meeting. Our current budget, I believe, is based off of a 4% increase in tax revenues. The latest estimate from the county treasury is they expect it to come in at least 5.5. So that's continued good news and should take care of any possible deficit spending in this year's budget. It might be close, but we'll be right there. And so I thought you'd be interested in those things.
So it was estimated at 4.2, it says on page 13, and what is it now, probably?
4... 5.5 was what the treasurer, the representative from the treasurer's office. But that's just their current estimate. Their estimate last year at this time, it ended up coming in higher, and it ended up coming in at 6.18, significantly higher than their estimate. So their estimate is also always a little conservative. But bottom line is, they're projecting higher than our budgets based off of it. I think that's all the relevant stuff. The rest of it is just the documentation that goes along with no findings.
So if... Just staying on page 70.
Uh-oh, you're going to play stump the superintendent. That's an easy game to play. All right, go ahead.
So there's a statement in the second paragraph. "The district has inferred operating surpluses in all of the past three years and anticipates incurring an operating deficit for next year." And you've already addressed that, okay. But if I go up to three lines up from the bottom in the chart... it says available reserves as a percentage of total output. And so you can see in two thousand fifteen, we had a twenty-six percent, and then twenty-two percent, and now we're down to, for two thousand sixteen seventeen, we're down to sixteen point four percent. And our board stated goal is fifteen percent on that line, correct?
That's not the same, not the same percentage.
Pardon?
I don't think that we, I don't think that percent is the same thing in fifteen and sixteen, we were closer to fifteen percent. I don't think that number is the same as the reserves.
What's what?
Okay, well, that's not.
It says available reserves as a percentage of total output.
Okay, well, I don't recall in sixteen and seventeen ever having twenty-six point two percent or twenty-two point four, because the union would have thumped us to increase teacher salary, because that's way, way too high of a, of a, that's, that's an irresponsibly high reserve. We've been barely getting to fifteen percent, so I'm curious where that number came from, because the three-year, that's one of the things I wrote about. The three-year projections has us going down as well, and I, I don't have, I didn't bring that budget with me. But I'm curious where this, that's, I don't believe those are the same numbers that are listed as reserves in our.
Well.
Other budget. Either way, they're going down, I didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Budgets are estimates, this is the auditor's assessment of actuals, um, so they don't necessarily line up. Bottom line is that we did, um, at the end of last fiscal year, do those set asides, um, they were listed in, um, this year's budget as set asides, um. And so, you know, there was, um, we did pretty well last year, we did pretty well. As our, um, expenditures though go up over time, do you increase costs? Even though our reserves, whereas our, um, yeah, I mean, it's pretty clear, the auditor shows that in two thousand fifteen, seven hundred fifty-one thousand.
But I hear what you're saying, yeah.
But, but, and, and just one thing to think about, if you look at the line sort of in the middle of that chart that is labeled increase parents decrease in fund balance, so that's essentially our operating income for the year turned into school language. Right, so sixty-two thousand in two thousand fifteen, six thousand in two thousand sixteen, and then sixty-eight thousand last year, correct?
That's the increase.
We're looking at increase and decrease in fund balance? Where did, where did you get your number? It, um, it's kind of in the middle of the chart, the first one with the double lines underneath. Yeah, I see. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so if, where does that number come from? If you look up above, the, the second line of numbers is total revenues and other sources.
Right.
Okay, and then the fifth line down is total expenditures and other uses. And then the next line down is the difference between those two.
I see.
So it's income minus expenses, and, and that's the net income, and where it goes is into the fund balance.
Right.
So what, what you can see, because our expenditures are increasing so quickly, even though you're operating at, with net positive income, your reserves are still dropping.
As a percent of outgoing.
Right, if, if you look through here and you look at the increases in stirs in particular, you know, that's just a chart like that. It's, it's her money.
Well, no, but if you look at number two, or it says available reserves, and it has that superscript two.
Yeah.
And then, you know, that's where you're talking about two thousand fifteen, seven hundred and fifty-one, look at what it says for two. Available reserves consist of all unassigned fund balances, including all amounts reserved for economic uncertainties. The economic uncertainties is what we're used to looking at as fifteen percent.
No, there's a, there's a level, and is it still five percent, or has it gone up to?
Well, whatever it is, that fifteen, that twenty-six point two percent includes a lot more than what's on our three-year projections as of reserves. I don't, that, that twenty-six, as far as when the state says you have to have five, we voted for fifteen percent. Whatever that number is, it's not, it's never been these twenty-two point four or twenty-six. The number on this page includes, it says available reserves consist of all unassigned fund balances, all of them. Including all amounts reserved for economic uncertainties contained with the general fund and the special reserve fund. I'm not saying this number's wrong, but it's not the, it's not the uncertainty amount, the reserves that we're all looking at usually. I wish I had the budget with me, I'm trying to find it on my computer.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's well, well spoken, but, so the, a significant thing is though that we're, we are not, we have not operated at a deficit over the past three years, and if the information Scott just gave us is, is realistic, it's likely that we will not this year, even in the budget.
Shows the two hundred thousand, yeah.
Deficit, so it's really helpful to.
Yeah, even, I'm doing the numbers, and it may not come all the way to completely erase the two hundred thousand, but it's gonna, it's gonna cut it at least by a third, or like, maybe two-thirds, because this is what Rebecca, this has been, what's so great about the county, and Melanie working with her, is they got much more conservative about the projections, and so does Barbara Godwin. They're, they're so, they're so conservative about the projections, that we always end up with more money than we anticipate, which is so much better than spending, spending too much. And, uh, so those numbers of all, in the, in the final analysis, they've always been higher than, than what we're seeing here. And then, you know, you have to go back to, you know, they're real numbers when you get back into the previous years, so.
Okay, is there more discussion about the audit? Uh, can I have a motion to, uh, to be approved or accepted?
I move that we accept the audit, sixteen seventeen audit.
I second it.
Okay, uh, thank you, Hannah, one more time, oh, no, maybe not one more.
Val is second.
Val was the second.
Member Brownout?
Aye.
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Member Friend?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, so what we have next on the agenda is closed session, open session, summary, and review of action items. I, I'm gonna ask that we review action items passing the calendar before we go into closed session, so that those who then have to stay for closed session can leave. Is that, is that acceptable to the board?
Are you waiting for something?
Yeah, I'm waiting for somebody to speak up and say, this is, this is what I have.
Well, we've heard, excuse me, heard a couple times tonight, I would like something or a discussion on what to do, or what kind of protocol we have when a board bylaw has, or some policy has not been followed.
You want that on tap, or that key for?
I wanna discuss it, because right now we can't discuss it, because it's not on an agenda.
Right, so we're, put that, and so we will have that as an agenda for the December board meetings. And Scott, I would ask that you get some legal input on that before the meeting, so that it's not just us floundering around and expressing our opinions.
I would ask that the board, um, decide on a date for their workshop in January.
Okay, we, we can't see all the little stuff, we don't know if everybody's voted, or, can you help us out with that?
Are you saying Hannah wants to do that now, or next month, wouldn't you wanna know now?
That's what she said.
I would like to get back to CSBA, there are two dates now that are available, and, um, I don't know how much longer those two dates will stay available.
But were they again, I, I know I voted on one, but I can't remember.
And one of them was Saturday twenty-seven.
Pull it up right here, oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
My birthday, and I said no.
Well, that's the one I want.
Why would you? Well, then you're gonna bring me a birthday present, if you get it.
I'm gonna write this down, it's Susan's birthday.
Got it.
Saturday, January twenty-seventh.
How young are you gonna be?
Wednesday, January twenty-four.
Then I'm not bringing you anything.
What was that last one, excuse me, I couldn't hear it.
Why is it not six hours, which has been before, why is it only four hours? Um, CSBA will do, you know, whatever, whatever it takes.
The twenty-four.
Okay, what I'm hoping.
And the twenty-seven.
For the, for the Wednesday either.
So the times may change, I guess is what I'm saying. Go four P M. to ten P M., or nine to three.
Oh, it's, it's actually the sixth round.
And Hannah, you go to vote.
So they're available for.
Four P M. to, to ten P M. If, if it takes a six, six hours, there's a question about why it was only four hours.
The question from who?
One of the board members.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, how come Liz isn't up there?
And Val.
You have to come in a joy too.
Did he vote yet?
I don't, I don't know if I sent the doodle to Rebecca.
Yeah, I voted.
Rebecca.
You voted?
Member Wright has not had internet access for the last two weeks, so that's why he hasn't had a phone.
But he just said he voted.
Yeah, I think I did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Well, which ones are, what date do you prefer?
What'd you vote for?
Gotta go look, because I can't see from here.
No, I'm with you.
When you're, when you're looking on the side of this.
Yeah.
This is worthless, um, yeah, I don't know.
We need a new building for our working.
What do you have, twenty-fourth?
What? Oh, it could be on the side, maybe, or it could be, um.
Which one did you go for?
Twenty-fourth.
And I assume.
I can tell you right now, twenty-seventh is a, it's a, a sixteen-team tournament for basketball throughout the, throughout. Both San Barbara and San Luis.
And those are the only two dates available.
Those are the two dates available in January, we can move to February if you would like me to do that.
How about December?
Um, I doubt that it's available in December, but I have time.
Good beginnings workshop.
I'm, I'm available.
We just already need it.
Oh, we need it?
So it better be very specific. Maybe it's seven.
What are you high on?
Just looking for direction at this moment in time, at eight P M.
Val, have, have we heard from you?
Yeah, he just said, he's got a big deal on Saturday.
Yeah, there's no way.
I have a bigger deal, it's my birthday.
I have a commitment on the twenty-fourth, which I can't, so I, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I will go back to the drawing board, the CSBA moved to February.
Can I, can I make a suggestion that if anybody at this exact minute knows what date you can't in February? Could you tell Hannah that, because then that would might help speed up the process?
Don't they give us the?
Well, no, but if she knows already that there are a date, like if you're at a basketball tournament or something.
Are all your Saturdays spoken for in February too?
No.
I'm open in February.
I don't have anything written down so far for February.
Because it's too far out.
Groundhog Day is on the second.
I'll be.
President's Day is the nineteenth.
Okay.
Sorry, Hannah, we tried.
We have a decision that we're gonna try for February, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so as far as action items for next month, uh, Scott, we ask you to get some clarification of the two parts of the language in the Brown Act that seem to be in conflict. One that says we are allowed to hear anything, and the other one says that we're allowed to hear things in other meetings.
Well, the conflict was subject matter jurisdiction or general information.
Um, just, wait a second, I put this somewhere. Just so I understand, is that the specific thing of?
It was government code five four nine five two point two C one, is what we're talking about. And, uh, you know.
Yeah, I'd like clarification, because I always, those things that are commas, you know, the, the statement in the center, other than part of the meeting, if you take that out, I think it actually becomes more clear, but, um, clarification. Because this would be the other jurisdictions or of the meetings. That's as clear as mud.
So, did you, did you get both the references? With the, so, so one of them is five four nine five two dot two C two.
Neither one's A.
Five four nine.
Five two two C is what he said.
Point two C.
That exception, and what does that exception mean? Well, well, what, okay, so I, I wanna go back up here and see.
It's this, I can show you this one up here.
Five, five four nine five two dot two. Which is the one that talks about.
Which is the one that we're all.
Hearing subject matter jurisdiction.
And then the other one is. Five four nine five two dot two C two.
If you're having a conversation about me in front of me, you might wanna go outside, or have a different time. No, they're talking about me, so.
I don't say they, do not say they.
Okay.
I'm listening.
Having a conversation about.
I asked him which one we're having a problem with.
Yeah, and I was.
But don't, I don't, don't look at me like that, don't look at me like that, I am not, I am listening.
Under your breath, I'll tell you later.
Are there other?
I, what am I supposed to do, I can't gag him.
I know, you're right, nobody can.
And then.
And ask it in public.
Okay, so, um.
In front of all of us, Ron, not with this, under your breath comments, please.
I, I'm tired of being scolded by you, I'm scold, we're scolded if we, if we, if we speak out about the question, or scolded if one person asks.
I'm not scolding, I'm just saying if you're having a conversation about me, I would like to hear it.
That's not.
It's not scolding. Exactly, it's not appropriate, that's, I'm asking you to not do it.
So I'm asking you to stop it, all of you. Okay, so we are gonna go now back to closed session.
Can I ask a question? It was the five four nine five two point two C two.
Right.
And what was the other one?
Five four nine five two point two A.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll return to item number eleven, closed session.
You want me to witness me, I'm turning this off, I'm not gonna be recording.